It is seven o'clock. I call this council meeting to order. Item. Item two, roll call.
Councilman Jacob.
Here.
Councilman, let's go here.
Here.
Councilman Schultz.
Here.
President Johnson.
Here.
Uh, Councilman Becker is excused absence, however, may join us if he is able to.
Item three, public hearings. Tonight we have none. Item four, public comment. The city council will receive comments from the city residents. Comments are generally limited to three minutes per individual. Anyone wishing to speak is required to sign up in advance or or state the following items for record when called upon. Name, address, subject matter, and contact information. No action will be taken on any public comment unless the item is elsewhere on the agenda. Tonight. Tonight we have Dean Trust.
Welcome to the podium, please.
I, yeah, I can help pass tomorrow. It's just then audio can get picked up for the video and our listeners.
Yeah, I just, um, I'm Dean Charles, uh, thirteen fifteen Moncler Place, what I can see, Wisconsin. I am, uh, the president of the UTV ATV club here in, in Fort and and in, uh, Kuskin County. And I just want to just slide into a second meeting, and I know I spoke last time around, but I was just thinking of overwhelming support we are at Fort Fest to sell apparel and stuff like that for our club. And we thought we'd put the petition together to see who kind of like would like to see ATV traffic and UTV traffic in Fort Atkinson. And it was overwhelming support, and I just thought I, you know, have our club put together a little petition and see who's really likes or is on board with UTV ATV traffic in Fort Atkinson. And every, and just to go out and talk to people, you know, see who would be against it, who was against it, and, um, it's just, you know, everybody, once you talk to them about, you know, um, having it in town and around it, they're all for it. And even, even the people that were a little bit against it, the older crowd, they said, you know, they really came on board after you just talked to them for a minute and just said, why it brings a smile to people's face, and it brings, brings the neighborhoods together too, with driving around neighborhoods and stopping by neighborhoods, and it, it does help with policing neighborhoods also in friendship. And, uh, as of I found out when I was out and about, you know, in different towns and stuff like that, everybody's just more just comes on board with it. And, uh, and I believe there's no reason we shouldn't have it in Fort Atkinson as all the, all, everybody else around us, Palmyra, uh, Johnson's Creek just came on board. We have it in Whitewater, um, even outskirts of Jamesville, which you can leave and, um, of course, uh, um, Lake Mills, um, Cambridge areas all promote four wheeler traffic and UTV traffic. And I just want to just, you know, so I'm here tonight again, just to see what I'm working on responses and stuff like that of see what the community really likes. And if they're on board with it, and I got overwhelming results to the point of, you know, it, it makes me feel good to that. I'm trying to do something worthwhile. Thank you very much for hearing me out. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Uh, whether, are there any other folks in the audience who'd like to speak? First call for anyone on Zoom who'd like to speak? Second call? Third and final call? We move on to the next item. Item five, the consent agenda. The consent agenda is outlined below and is hereby presented for action by the city council. Items may be removed from the consent agenda, agenda on the request of any one council member. Items not removed may be adopted by one action without debate. Removed items may be taken up either immediately after council agenda or consent agenda and or placed on later on the agenda at the discretion of the council president.
I move to approve the consent agenda as listed items five A through five G.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item five A. Review and possible action relating to the, to the minutes of June sixth, twenty twenty-three, regular city council. Oops. Is that the consent agenda? Item number six petitions, requests and communications. Item A, review and possible action relating to the proclamation recognizing July as Parks and Recreation Month in the city of Fort Atkinson.
I will be reading the proclamation. Whereas Parks and Recreation is an integral part of the communities throughout this country, including the city of Fort Atkinson. And whereas Parks and Recreation promotes health and wellness, improving the physical and mental health of people who live near parks. And whereas Parks and Recreation promotes time spent in nature, which positively impacts mental health by increasing cognitive performance and well-being and alleviating illnesses such as depression, efficient, attention deficient disorders and Alzheimer's. And whereas Parks and Recreation encourages physical activities by providing space for popular sports, dance, community programs, hiking trails, swimming pools, and many other activities designed to promote active lifestyles. And whereas Park and Recreation programming and education activities such as out, out of school time programming like the youth center, youth sports and environmental education are critical to childhood development. And whereas Park and Recreation increases a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses and crime reduction. And whereas Parks and Recreation is fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community. And whereas Parks and Recreation is essential and adaptable infrastructure that makes our communities resilient in the face of natural disasters and climate change. And whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. And whereas the United States House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month. And whereas the city of Fort Atkinson recognizes the benefits derived from park and recreation resources. Now therefore Bruce Johnson, city council president of the city of Fort Atkinson. Hereby recognize the month of July as Parks and Recreation Month in the city of Fort Atkinson and encourage all residents, visitors and guests to enjoy the city's parks, aquatic center and recreational programming in July and throughout the year. Photo opportunity, please. We will present that to Park and Rec Director.
Couldn't have said it any better. So thank you for reading that and thank you Director Francine and your staff for, um, all that you do for our community. I, I move to approve the proclamation recognizing the month of July as Parks and Recreation Month in the city of Fort Atkinson.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number seven, resolutions and ordinances. A. Second and possible third final reading of the action of on an ordinance relating to a zoning map amendment to change the zoning from downtown periphery mixed use to DPMU to neighborhood mixed use and MU for the properties located at twenty-one or two eleven Milwaukee Avenue East and two ten South Water East Street. Mr. Shelley.
Thank you. Uh, this is, uh, as, uh, council president Johnson indicated, the second, uh, reading, we were asking to forego the third reading, um, for this, uh, particular parcel. Um, we spoke about it last time. This is next to Beauty and the Bean. Uh, the neighborhood mixed use designation will allow, uh, more residential options for this um, property than the downtown periphery mixed use does, which is, uh, which allows residential, but only in the context of commercial as well. So the, uh, the owner of the parcel, uh, has had a difficult time selling it and attracting, uh, folks to develop it. Uh, and, uh, and I think, um, in going this direction will find that there might be some other options available. Uh, we haven't received any feedback, uh, at the, uh, at the city, um, regarding this request, uh, since our last meeting. Uh, I don't know if any of you have or not, but I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Yes, I'm just happy to see possibility of it being developed as long as I can know it's been a vacant lot.
Yeah. Pretty attractive location too, it's a.
Yeah, no, uh, this Melanie Becker, this Mrs. Melanie Becker is not here, um, in the audience, but I'd like to thank her for exploring opportunities to make some of these vacant lot properties here in town, something that can be developed, so. I've moved to suspend the rules and operate third and final reading of this ordinance.
Second.
Any other debate? All those in favor signify by saying.
Roll call vote.
Who? Sorry. Roll call vote, please.
Councilman Jacob.
Yes.
Councilman, let's go here.
Aye.
Councilman Schultz.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye. Motion carries. Item eight, reports.
Oh, oh. It's a, it's a tricky one. It's the two-step process on these because we, uh, we forego the third reading.
I, I, I move to enact the ordinance amending the official zoning map for the city of Fort Atkinson to change the zoning of the subject properties from DPMU to NMU. Second.
Any further debate? Is this a roll call vote?
I have my note next to me. We, nope, we're gonna.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item eight, reports of officers, boards and committees. We have a city manager report from our city manager Rebecca.
Yes, thank you. Uh, um, and, uh, I apologize that I'm appearing via Zoom. Um, I, uh, I've had an illness today, so, um, anyway, uh, my report, uh, um, I'm happy to announce that Governor Evers signed AB two forty-five into law this morning in Wausau. Very pleased to have been, have contributed to the attention to the issue of additional shared revenue for Wisconsin municipalities. And I look forward to including those additional funds in the twenty twenty-four budget. Staff will be analyzing and researching the additional components of the bill to determine how they may impact other city operations or, or future opportunities. The Hore Museum held its trivia night on June sixteenth and its annual very day at the museum on June seventeenth with one hundred and, or excuse me, seven hundred and fifty people and nine cows in attendance. Museum staff and volunteers are also preparing for the, uh, World War Two USO concert and dance on June twenty-fourth and the forty-fifth annual ice cream social on July fourth. Please visit the website for more information on those events. Police Captain Brandon Saxy graduated from the Wisconsin Law Enforcement College June ninth. Congratulations to Captain Saxy on seeking out and completing, uh, continued education and training. Another bit of good news from the police department is that Officer Adam Lawrence and the team welcomed a new canine officer Schmitty to the Fort Atkinson Police Department. Uh, Officer Lawrence and Smitty will now head to training in July and will return to work in the community by mid-August. Smitty will be trained in, uh, narcotics detection, tracking, evidence, location, apprehension and handler protection. The deadline for applications to be part of the local government academy has now passed and all thirteen applicants have been invited to participate. We're still waiting on a couple more, um, confirmation that, uh, that people want to participate, but we are on track to, uh, to start the program in late July. Roadwork on Highway twelve, uh, continues. The sidewalk ramp improvements, uh, continue as, as I'm sure you've all seen and heard recently. Uh, and the milling and repaving is scheduled to begin, uh, mid to late July. I will hopefully be attending the Wisconsin City County Management Association Conference in Green Bay, uh, starting tomorrow through Friday. I'm also scheduled to speak at the League, uh, of Wisconsin Municipalities Clerk Treasure Finance Officers Conference, which is also in Green Bay tomorrow. Clerk Ebert will be in attendance and is presenting at that conference as well. Uh, and just a reminder that city offices and facilities will be closed on Tuesday, July fourth for the Fourth of July holiday. And the city council meeting that week has been moved to Thursday, July sixth at seven P M. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca. Moving on, item number nine, unfinished business. Tonight we have none. Item ten, new business. Item ten A, review and possible action to authorize the city manager to sign a contract for, uh, agenda management services with Civic Plus.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, over the past several years, staff has been, uh, putting steps in place to improve communication with the state council and residents and to increase access to information about um, city finances and services. Uh, and as part of that, uh, there are some efficiencies that can be created using an agenda management system, uh, both internally and externally. We have been, uh, looking at a couple of different options for that, um, service and we, uh, viewed proposals from Granicus Champion Data Systems, Revise and, uh, Civic Plus. Um, Civic Plus is the maker of our financial software. Uh, so this would be another module that we would have through Civic Plus, uh, and making it more of an, um, enterprise-wide type, uh, system. So, uh, the twenty twenty-three budgets include funds for agenda management software in the amount of ten thousand dollars in the dues and subscriptions account in the city manager's, uh, budget. The proposal from Civic Plus will cost eight thousand one hundred and fifty-seven dollars in the first year and five thousand thirty-five dollars in year two. Uh, the initial cost, uh, includes the annual fee, premium configuration, custom template design, virtual consulting and two training sessions of half a day each. There's also a discount due to the city having multiple services with the company. So the ongoing cost of the web-based software is expected to be similar to the cost in year two, around five thousand dollars. Uh, if approved, staff would intend to, uh, continue to budget for this subscription service. As I did mention before, we did look at the other products and they really did not provide the form and function that we thought would assist, uh, us in the most efficient way of creating, uh, these packets uh, that are currently just created using Adobe, uh, and, um, Sarah Weard in my office spends about half a day uh, with the city council packet and a little bit less than that, um, for the plan commission packet. Uh, so it ends up being weekly, um, putting these packets together with information typically emailed, uh, from different departments within the city. Uh, so this agenda management software would allow for, um, each, uh, department to log into a web-based system and put their documents in, um, specific templates that we would create. Uh, and then it would all kind of come together at the end and be posted directly to, to the, um, to the city's website for distribution. And so staff does recommend that the council authorize the city manager to execute the contract with Civic for the management software at a cost of eight thousand one hundred and fifty-seven dollars in twenty twenty-three with funds from the city manager dues and subscriptions. We'd be happy to answer any questions.
Wow. So you're basically are sure that by this eight thousand dollars, it would free up your staff for other stuff throughout the days of the week?
Yeah, it would create efficiencies in my office and I, it would create efficiencies in other departments as well. Uh, there would be a workflow aspect to it as well. So as soon as what, uh, a department team, uh, management team member is complete, uh, with memo, it would send me an email saying that that information is in the system and then I could review it and pass it along to the next approval. Uh, so there's, there's a workflow involved, um, internally that would allow, create some efficiencies and you, you know, emailing documents back and forth, uh, to each other. There's, there's certainly opportunity for, um, error in using incorrect versions of such documents, uh, and it does take up, um, server space as well.
Okay. Yeah, I think with some of the, uh, software packages that I've had a purchase and, and implement in, in my history, um, surprisingly, and my, my view is a little bit biased, but this is relatively very inexpensive compared to some of the software packages that I've seen. Um, and thank you for all the, your detailed information about, uh, your comparisons um, and how you feel like this is the best choice. Uh, I move to authorize the city manager to sign a contract for agenda management services with Civic Plus at a cost of eight thousand one hundred and fifty-seven dollars with funds from the city manager dues and subscriptions account. Second.
Any further debate? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item ten B, review and possible action relating to wastewater utility twenty twenty-two compliance maintenance annual report C M A R to the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources. Mr. Christensen.
Good evening, everybody. Um, this is our yearly report to the state, um, on the condition and operation and performance of the wastewater treatment plant. Um, and we have had a average rainfall year, so we, um, last year, so we did not, this is per twenty-two year. Um, so we did not have any points off for anything, much like the year before. Year before we were a little drier than normal. Last year was pretty average. Um, the points that we've received in the past have usually been for for our high flows in the springtime, um, in the early summer with the river being high and things like that with our, kind of our, what's become more typical flooding time of year. Um, so with no points for, for that this year, um, we had all A's in all the categories, um, covers everything from our F O quality to our financial management, to our, our maintenance activities, to um, certification for me and for other backup operators that, that can still sign our, our monthly reports to the state. Um, so it's pretty wide-ranging, even has electrical questions on there now to do with, you know, our efficiency and, and use of power. As most plants use quite a bit of power, so it's good information. It's something we're already looking at, um, always, so, um, they added it a few years ago. Um, but, um, as I had said, um, generally speaking, we had a, a very good year. Um, although we had an A inflection systems, we did have a sanitary sewer, sewer overflow back last February. Um, it was in Rock River Park on the, kind of the southwest end of the park. Um, the, there's just south of there is a river crossing that goes under the Rock River and an accumulation of grease and wipes and sediment, um, clog that river crossing and backed it up. After a, uh, some frantic cleaning, um, the, uh, siphon was, was cleaned, um, from one end to the other. Um, that area is now checked regularly and cleaned. Um, so that doesn't happen again. We'll be soon moving some monitoring equipment over to, um, a manhole that is in the park there that'll warn us in advance of any kind of increased high levels if the sewer starts to back up. So that'll be a little bit of added insurance. Um, so other than that, um, like I said, we had a very good year. Um, everything is going well. Everything's going well with our construction that's starting to wind down. They just told me today that eighteen weeks they'll be, they'll be out of there. Um, so we'll see, hopefully. Hopefully out of there and done, not just out of there, so. Um, but everything's been going well with that too. So any, if you have any questions on the C M A R, I'd be happy to answer them.
Sounds like you got some nice preventative measures taken for the future.
Right. I mean, Tom's crew, you know, does all of the sewer cleaning and and, uh, you know, that was just one of those things that happens from time to time. But whenever anything like that's found, it quickly gets added to a list and they're checked regularly and they're, they do a great job of that.
Hard to argue with a straight A report card. Um, yeah, but, uh, with respect to the, the one overflow event, um, is it? This one happened in an area where, um, if you had to have some overflow, it happened in an advantageous.
Yeah, it was a Jason, right.
So I'm wondering like if it had happened in, are, is the system built to sort of have some of those, uh, areas where you can withstand, um, an event like that without causing even, you know, more harm to, to, to properties?
Well, I mean, we have, our mains are all sized, you know, very well. I mean, we don't have, we don't really have any areas that, where we have really undersized mains or where we're really pushing capacity in any of the areas. Uh, we, we've looked, we looked at that a few years ago. Um, we have areas and in particular when the river is high, you know, because, um, sewers do leak, you know, unfortunately if they're, you know, they've been around here for almost a hundred years. A lot of them are, are still clay. Um, it cracks and when things are wet and the groundwater is high, it can, it does leak into the system. Um, but we've, um, uh, we have three really bigger interceptors in the city. Uh, and they are capacity-wise, uh, to handle those kinds of flows is, is very good. Uh, that helps a lot. Uh, recently with the construction, we, we did a bypass um, at the plant of our, our influence structure, so it could be pretty much rebuilt, replaced. And we backed up the main interceptor sewer that runs up along the bike trail. Um, and we were not sure how much we could back that up. You know, we had it backed up on purpose to allow pumps in the manholes upstream to be able to work like a lift station. Um, and after investigating that and, and then actually going through it, we learned, you know, that we have quite a bit of capacity in that interceptor sewer. That doesn't mean, you know, that means you still have to check things. Um, the technology is out there now, like we have, it's actually built into a manhole cover that will be putting this on and it uses satellite to send the information back to us. And we'll probably be in the future adding more of those. You can use it for monitoring flow in your system, your stations or in your, in your collection system too. Not just high levels, but you can have it monitoring flow in, in a manhole and also have it also give you alarms for, you know, a high level backup type of thing too, so.
Well, we don't, we don't have any strategic overflow locations, but can you just touch on what, what we in two thousand and eight, when we had way too much water coming into the plant and had to overflow, where did we decide to do that?
Uh, we did at the lift stations. So we did some, um, the majority of it was at Water Street Lift Station on South Water Street East. Um, and the, uh, because that was the area that had the most severe flooding, where a lot of the homes had flooded basements. And those have direct connections to the sanitary sewer and a lot of those older homes like that and and, uh, so that was where we did, uh, the most of it. Um, but also we did some over at the, we call it our Sherman Avenue Lift Station or Mechanic Streets right back in parking lot back here. We had to do it just a little bit there. And it's, uh, our large lift station at Memorial Park, we had to do, I think for one day, I think we did. Um, was not that much, so majority of it was in the area that was most affected by the floodwaters. So we, and we do not have any other way to do like some community, like larger communities sometimes have a um, a way to bypass the plant or something like that. We do not have a way to do that. Everything has to go through the plant.
Which is what we want.
Right.
Uh, uh, thank you just for the reminder that, um, people flushing objects down the toilet can cause backups. We, you know, um, many times we look at the condition of the road and forget that there's, you know, pipes and stuff underneath that, um, through frost cycles. Whatever other, you know, actions that, um, don't necessarily make those perfect anymore. Um, they're aged. Um, and, and things that weren't meant to be flushed down, you know, can cause problems within our city.
Right.
Create costs to the city. Um, so thank you for that reminder.
Yeah, even though we recently added screening at the, you know, the plant that removes all this material that, you know, those, those things are not in the, in the collection system.
It still shows.
It still caused problems. We remove, um, probably about anywhere from half to three quarters of a two-yard dumpster twice a week of just material that's removed from the collection system at the plant before it gets through the rest of, rest of the plant, so.
Alright.
Yes, I'd move to approve the resolution authorizing the twenty twenty-two compliance maintenance annual report for the Fort Atkinson wastewater utility.
Second.
Further debate? All those four signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you.
One of the rare times that you come up for us and didn't ask for money, so thank you. Are we done yet?
No.
So you fixed it. Item ten C, review and possible action relating to the twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-five Ford Youth Tackle Football Field Use and Concession Stand Agreement. Director Fransen.
Yes, thank you. So the city currently has a number of informal unwritten agreements in place relating to the use of parks and fields by private organizations. Staff has a goal of formalizing these agreements through written documents to ensure clarity and consistency in these valued partnerships. The attached field use and concession stand agreement between the city and Fort Youth Tackle Football clearly identifies the responsibilities of each group involved and provides a framework for future participating organizations. Purpose of establishing a user agreement such as this is to foster a strong partnership with the organizations utilizing specific fields while offering youth sports at an affordable rate. I'm just gonna say football, Football League has a longstanding history of utilizing the Kiwanis football fields at Rock River Park and they have had priority access to these fields. In addition to them using those fields, we also host grades K through three games on five Saturdays in the fall. And then Fort Youth Soccer Association occasionally hosts practices at the football fields as well, depending on availability. So under the proposed agreement, the city will maintain control over the scheduling of those fields. The Football League has made significant contribut- contributions to the football fields through their fundraising efforts, including funding, building, and maintaining the concession stand, press box, storage garage, small storage shed, two scoreboards, light poles, and fixtures. While the Football League is responsible for repair and replacement of all the aforementioned items, they must seek approval from the city. This approval process is crucial in maintaining consistency of color and facade through throughout the parks as well as ensuring that new buildings or structures are not built without proper city approvals. The Football League holds public liability insurance and will hold the city harmless from any third-party claims which arise from the leased property. The city currently has a concession stand lease agreement with the Fort Atkinson Lions Club at Ralph Park, Fort Youth Baseball at Memorial Park, and then Fort Atkinson General's baseball team at Jones Park. Just last week on June fourteenth, the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board unanimously recommended city council approve the this field use and concession stand agreement between the city and Fort Youth Tackle Football. This user agreement will result in an annual general revenue for the city of twelve dollars per participant or a minimum of two thousand dollars each season. In twenty twenty-two, one hundred and forty-five kids were enrolled. Additionally, the lease portion of the agreement will result in an annual general revenue for the city of two hundred dollars. And then in addition to that, the Football League usually typically donates to projects that support the Kiwanis football fields, which staff expects to continue in the future. And then the city is responsible for the maintenance of the fields, including fertilizing, mowing, and aerating. So the field use payment is to help offset costs accrued at the designated user agreement locations. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
I'd like to just say thank you. This is, I think, maybe the second user agreement or lease agreement that 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 I've seen come through. And I I think it does highlight how how many organizations throughout the city contribute so much. And I appreciate your work on this and as well as the Fort Atkinson Fort Youth Tackle Football Organization.
Yes, thank you. We're working on, we have a number of handshake agreements with a lot of organizations that we're working on untangling and putting into formal written agreements. So you'll be seeing a few more come in the next couple of years.
Which is smart. I mean, it's wise to formalize some of these agreements that with organizations like the youth tackle football program that we've always had strong relationships with, but not a bad idea to put them on paper. So years from now, when the faces and key players change, we have something to look back on.
I move to approve the two thousand twenty-three to two thousand twenty-five Fort Youth Tackle Football Field Use and Concession Stand Agreement between the city of Fort Atkinson and the Fort Youth Tackle Football Program.
Second. Any further debate? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item ten D, review and possible action to upgrade and improve neighborhood storm warning sirens. Chief Roush.
Good evening. Since Paul didn't ask you for any money. So in April, we contracted with a company to do maintenance on the storm sirens. It's one of those projects that's kind of not been consistently dealt with. And we know that the sirens are getting a little bit older, so we we thought it was good to have a little tune-up on them. Unfortunately, through the maintenance, we identified a significant issue with the siren on James Way. And since then, it has completely failed, even though it was repaired during the maintenance trip here. It's now failed entirely, so it's now non-operational. That siren is also, along with some of the other sirens, is not accessible from the public right-of-way. And if you look, read through the the maintenance reports that I attached with the memo, you'll notice that some of the sirens were not accessed this year because the ground was so rough. So as part of the the proposal to replace the James Way siren, we'd also like to relocate it so it's accessible from the public way. So we'll move it out closer to the curb so that we can reach it with a boom truck without actually driving on the lawn. I would recommend that in the future, as we replace other sirens, that we would take that same step and move them so that they're all accessible. So what we're asking for this evening is is to replace the James Way siren because there is no parts available for it any longer. Believe there, we look back, I believe they're fifty-four years old. And also the the siren at Ralph Park, the pole is getting rotten on. So we're asking to replace that pole and leave the existing siren there, at least for the short term. This was not funded in the capital plan. It was an unexpected expense, but Rebecca did look through and found some money. The emergency management budget has a small supply budget, which is essentially placed in the budget each year. It's not often used, but that money is there in case of a severe storm comes through or flooding occurs or we need additional supplies. So that's somewhat of a preemptive preventative budget that we had no plans to use. So we're proposing to use that money this year and then also the ARPA money any amount of twenty-nine thousand five hundred and sixty-three dollars for the two repairs that are necessary in order to get the system back to full functionality. And with that, I would answer questions.
So the one on James, where you're just moving it out closer to the right-of-way, you're keeping on that property, though?
Yeah, it'll still, it will still be on city property. It'll be out close enough to the right-of-way that we don't have to drive on the lawn to get to it.
I did have a few people reach out to me that more to the eastern side of the south, meaning that they don't get to hear the sirens as well.
There's, there is an additional proposal that once the new emergency management director is appointed, I would expect we'll move forward to look at how we can possibly fund some other upgrades to the system and potentially a study to see where the dead spots are in the community. One of the things that will help with the siren that we're replacing on James Way, the new one will be significantly louder. We've gone to a larger model, which will cover a larger area. My recommendation would be as we replace the other three outlying sirens and the the sirens that's on the roof of City Hall, that the community look at potentially upgrading all of those sirens to the larger ones over a period of years.
I don't know if I overlooked this. Did you have a timeline of once approved, how long it would take to to repair?
Right now, it's about ten weeks for the siren to be manufactured. So we're probably looking at late summer before or we get it put in.
At least we haven't had any severe weather lately to constitute.
And the and the siren from downtown, if you know, if you're outside, you can hear this one in that area. It's not exceedingly loud, but one thing we need to also point out is that the storm sirens are not meant to be heard inside of homes. They're meant to be outside, outdoor warning sirens. We certainly recommend that the community use other methods either through the county or through commercial apps on phones for notification and also local TV and and other media.
When a storm siren is activated, what's the duration period? Does it go for a minute, five minutes?
I believe they're set to go for three minutes for tornadoes. And it's the that duration is a solid, steady tone where most people would recognize oscillating tone more like a like you would hear on a fire truck, but the storm siren is a is a steady tone, goes for three minutes. The other thing I would point out is there is no all-clear signal. The all-clear signal will come through public media, TV stations, radio stations, and those kind of things.
I had not known, I guess I never gave much thought that the sirens aren't built to be heard inside. It would, you know, if you're, if it's summertime, you're sleeping, you've got windows shut, air conditioning on, wouldn't be likely that you would you would necessarily hear them. But but if at at some point down the road, the city were to enhance the four sirens with ones that are louder, maybe that changes. But I'm also thinking if as the northwest the Baker Road development comes on, will, you know, current siren infrastructure.
Actually, the siren that's up on Clout Hill of Mesmer Street will cover that area pretty well, especially if we upgrade that to a larger one.
Okay.
A couple of areas that I have a bit of concern with is the far southeast part of the city and the southwest part over by the the new school. I think those are both areas that may be a little dead and you have to not just take into consideration the distance from the siren, but also the topography. And the James Way siren is a little bit down in the valley on Endler, so it doesn't carry out to the east as well as it could, I think. That new subdivision off of Highland, not new anymore, but by comparison, the siren extremely new. That area was never there when the sirens system that currently exists was laid out. Also, a lot of the area from Pick and Save to the south and west also was not there. So there are certainly probably some dead spots, but as you can see from the estimate that we have here, the the quote, you know, we're looking at about twenty-five thousand dollars per location, and that's a pretty significant issue with budgets the way they are right now.
So when it goes off, it's three minutes and it only goes off once?
No, if if we if we have a warning and that's when they're set off is when there's a warning for this area of the county. They'll activate for three minutes. If another warning is issued or a change in that warning is issued, they'll be activated again. Our sirens are activated by our local police department, although the county does have the ability to also activate them. But we have asked them not to. The county system, at the point when I became the emergency management director, they were setting off all of the sirens in the county anytime there was anything in the county. We thought that we needed to be a little more specific for our community. Since that time, the U S Weather Service has now gone to a a geoplotting system which only activates warnings for much smaller areas rather than whole counties at a time.
Thank you.
I move to approve the storm warning siren replacement at James Way and the pole replacement at Ralph Park for total cost of twenty-nine thousand five hundred and sixty-three dollars to be funded through the Emergency Management Supplies Account and the American Rescue Plan Act Fund.
Second. Any further debate? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on. Item eleven, miscellaneous. Tonight we have none. Item twelve, claims appropriations and contract payments. Item A, review and possible action relating to verified claims presented by the Director of Finance and Authorization of Payments. Clerk Ebert.
I move to approve the verified claims as presented.
Second.
So I don't miss another roll call vote? This is a roll call vote.
Thank you. Councilman Jacob?
Yes.
Councilman, let's go here.
Aye.
Councilman Schultz?
Aye.
President Johnson?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Motion carries. The favorite item, item thirteen, adjournment.
I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This meeting is over.